Okay, I open the special study session at seven forty-eight. And I'd like to. Who wants to head off? Call on, call on Jeff?
Mr. Windish.
Mr. Windish. Oh, you're ready.
Trying to get ready. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Ryan Windish, our Community Economic Development Director. And this evening, we're going to go over some very brief slides to remind everybody what we're talking about. It's the twenty-fifth, the twenty-twenty-five comprehensive plan annual amendments. And I'm sitting in for Shonda Walker. She's out sick today, but I have Brayden Shannon here, our assistant planner. Well, so. So this annual process takes a while, as you all know. The DACA, the proposals went to the planning commission in October. We provided a recommendation to council, went to council study session October thirteenth. City Council held a public hearing October third, excuse me, November third. And now we're at a study session, really to answer questions that you may have they have from what you heard at the public hearing. And then looking for adoption or action anyway, November twenty-fourth, so a week from today.
Right?
And there are four, actually six different ordinances. Three of them are associated with town center plan update at the end. And then there's some app amendments that talk briefly about again, and then a cap facilities plan amendment for the Sumner Bunny Lake School District.
All right. You want me to take them one at a time?
Um, let me just keep rolling through and and we'll get there.
Okay.
Uh, so the public comments, the staff memo, exhibit one has a summary of comments and a summary of staff responses. And these are the, we received a lot of comments on the thirtieth street rezone. Uh, and there are comments on the Southeast Urban Growth Area redesignation, and then a few comments on the town center plan update. Since those are in your packet, I won't do the detail, but got there. So the um, the first item, so there's no action tonight. It's a study session. Obviously, so it's it's for discussion. Uh, so the first item is the rezone on thirtieth street for east and give a quick reminder, kind of overview of this. I think we're all in the room here familiar with what's going on, but uh, let me do my job if I didn't talk a little bit about it. So, uh, this item is a applicant initiated request for a rezone of about three acres of property uh, near uh, twenty-ninth Street East, thirty-second Street, really up off of one hundred and forty-second uh, Mid Valley. And it's an area that is adjacent to uh, industrial, it's a residentially zoned neighborhood adjacent to industrial. Uh, the proposal is to rezone this three acres on the south edge of this neighborhood to light industrial. Uh, this went before, as I mentioned earlier, the planning commissions, uh, the planning commission's recommendation to council is to uh, not approve the request and retain the property as residential. So have to respond to any questions this time that you may have?
Anybody have any handy? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had two questions, uh, Ryan. Number one had to do with, um, I looked at your responses on some of the the comments here. I think one of them was like about noise, and I think I was just curious on the on the parcel to the uh, to the west of the parcel A on the map there is, I believe, the a couple of folks commented on the fact that there was a machine shop there and it was creating quite a lot of noise, which was interfering with the neighborhood. Is that something that like if someone comes in and changes use like that, is that is that something that the city is able to enforce? Because I feel like that's one of the concerns is noise. So I'm just looking at the one next door. And it seems like the noise was one of the one of the concerns that I heard at the public hearing. Um, is that something that is being enforced, could be enforced? Is it even breaking the code? Or is it appropriate for the code? Can you respond to that a little bit more in detail?
Uh, sure. So you're referring to your lettering on there some sort, uh, but it's the Omata project, the end of thirty-second on the north side. Um, so the Amada building faces, it fronts on the street and it has its doors, bay doors that face the neighborhood. And so there's noise generated through activities there. It is a machine shop. They have a cooling facility of some sort in the back that uh, can emit noise as well. Um, there's been a history of noise complaints in that area over the years, and I think we have a current one filed. Uh, how is that enforced? Uh, it's enforced by um, taking noise meter readings, seeing if it's compliant with the code or not. It's not compliant, then the property owner has to take measures to reduce that noise so that it is compliant. So the city does have enforcement ability in that regard. Um, and so that's just your entire question or not is what's.
I think, yeah, just it gets close to it. So I think so that one, you're not really sure if if that if they are actually breaking the noise thing. I'm just trying to figure out if that's if the noise they're producing is appropriate for the zoning. Um, or if you even know the answer to that, but I was just curious.
I I could tell you in the past, and it's probably been close to twenty years, maybe. It's been a long time. Uh, that there were definitely serious noise issues from a lot. And it took, uh, you know, hiring an independent sound consultant and pursuing uh, code enforcement in order to get uh, changes made there that made it so that the uh, the property came into compliance.
Okay, no, that's good to know. And I think the other thing I heard repeatedly was the truck traffic, but it wasn't, it wasn't so much traffic in general. It sounded like it was really just just semi-truck traffic. Um, and again, is that, is there any codes that prohibit semi-trucks from going down, uh, is it twenty-ninth and then one hundred and forty-sixth?
Uh, as far as you know, local deliveries only, I'm not real privy to the like what trucks can go on what streets, except that sometimes there's, I know there's signs there that say, you know, no turnaround, no trucks. Uh, as was testified by the folks who live out there and have to put up with it. Trucks get off route and then they're down, turning around at the end of the street or at the T there where twenty-nine hits one forty-six. There's, there may be some additional signage we could do. I'm not sure what more we could uh, have to, how COVID works and the police department about with that much.
I'm just trying to think in my mind, I'm just trying to distinguish between the there's some issues that relate to zoning. And then there's some issues that potentially relate to just enforcing code of like noise and and trucks. And so I'm just trying to make sure that I, when I'm making the decision. Um, so you said there was some code enforcement issues with the noise and some of that has been addressed. And potentially, there's been another complaint that you're, so there's something there and then on the truck traffic. You're not aware of any uh, any codes that would prohibit or penalize uh, big trucks from going down that road.
I am not. Chief of Police.
Ryan, are you on uh, ordinance number twenty-nine forty-three?
I am on ordinance number.
Yep.
Am I?
Yes, you are.
I'd have to go back to that slide.
Yes, go ahead.
So I know the residents, you know, object to a warehouse being built there, but if the person that owns the property still wants to develop the land and make it into apartments or well timed you know, family of uh, units. Would they be, would people accessing it be required to go down twenty-ninth or could they go down thirty-second? If it was, you know, for residential.
It's properties. So the, at the end of thirty-second, the parcel A does not actually touch or front on thirty-second.
Okay.
So that would require an easement from the southern property owner to allow for access to thirty-second. Currently, there, those parts were owned by the same entity.
Okay.
Uh, but nonetheless, that's an easement. It's not something the city could require somebody to necessarily. Um, I think it would be better for residential to go north on one forty-sixth, not twenty-ninth, and not even associate with thirty-second Street. Because I think the potential for trucks to drive through neighborhoods even more would be increased if you had a through road.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay, and then like yesterday, I drove through Fife and I was, went down a road that you know, it had residents on one side and then there were warehouses and it looked like there was, you probably had the fifty-feet buffer. And to me, it, I mean, just driving down the street, it didn't look too bad, but then I, I also understand that probably if you're living there, it would be a big impact on you. So I just hope that we can get this figured out. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Um, so just for a point of clarification, I believe Amada started out as a warehouse and was turned into a machine shop. And a machine shop can get very loud with the generators and all of the air compressors on the backside of the building, which go right against these homes. Um, so with that said, I know we've heard what we think the developers would like to put on the property if it were to be rezoned, but do we really know? Do we know what they want to do as light industrial? So we're guessing it's a warehouse. It could be a machine shop. It could be just about anything that falls into light industrial. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't really know what they want to put on it. So we'd be making a decision without really knowing what they want to do that will impact the neighbors. Then my next question would be uh, is the city or does the city have any intent to do anything to prevent truck traffic from coming down twenty-ninth and onto that backstreet? I think it's one forty-six. I'm not sure. So is there anything that the city that we would be willing to do irregardless, because they have truck traffic today because GPS systems don't work. So is there anything that we're talking about doing for these people so that they're not wiping out the Thomas's yard? Have we talked about that at all?
Um, just some you know, beginning internal conversations around what what can we do to try to make for less truck traffic?
Okay.
Or signage or enforcement.
Right.
I came up with the idea of an arch over the street that keeps big trucks from coming in, and that probably won't work with our boom trucks, so I don't know.
Okay. Um, if it stayed zoned as it is currently, how many residents could the property owner put on it?
Uh, that's a great question, because I think that the uh, the applicant was showing a lot more. Yeah, sixty-four, okay. Uh, sixty-four is not legally possible in our current zone. Uh, currently uh, if you just did kind of quick math without considering even removing areas for road, which one probably should. Um, the current code would allow for the approximate three acres to be divided into fifteen lots at the minimum lot size of eighty-five hundred square feet. Which are pretty generous lots. The current code of because of state requirements would also allow you to put one duplex if you wanted to on each one of those. Each one of those fifteen lots, so that could be thirty dwellments. Also, a requirement from the state is to allow for what's called middle housing, so up to one fourplex. Uh, the way the city approached that was you could put a fourplex on a lot that it's, that is at least one and a half times the minimum lot size. So that one and a half times, you have this twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. So if you divide that into uh, the acreage and then you multiply it by four, um, you're getting up to pretty close to forty dwellments per acre. That's, that's, that's your absolute, then again, that's not even considering roads, and there would need to be some kind of road accidents. Uh, access, stormwater, so the things that are going to reduce your growth. So forty gross would be absolute max, and it's probably going to be less than.
Okay.
Um, the applicant referred to what's called a unit lot subdivision.
I just have a couple more.
And unit lot subdivisions are now uh, requirement that's by the state that the the city accommodates those. But they are not intended to override under, undermine densities.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so you can't just come in and go as big and as many as you want, have to still comply with.
Okay, thank you for that. So if it was rezoned to light uh, industrial, what are the various type of modalities that could be put on that property? So a warehouse could be one. Uh, maybe a cross dock where trucks are coming in and out uh, all the time. That's two. Um, potentially, a machine shop could be three. Um, what else could there be that, because we don't know what they're actually going to put in.
Yeah, uh, great question. Um, just looking at the list on our, on our zoning code, contractor businesses. We manufacturing processing that that would require conditional use permit. Lumbernwood Products Manufacturing and Assembly.
I'm just.
There's a number of things, including, including like a truck, a truck yard.
Yes.
Park trailers.
Right. So I'm just asking, uh, because we're being asked to make a decision on something that we don't really know what the end result will be that will impact these people that live there. So that's my point I'm trying to make. Um, and a lot of them can drive a lot of noise, no matter what the code is, having ran a quite a few of these types of different entities, there's a lot of truck traffic and noise, just, you know. Uh, for me, I would want to know exactly what it is that somebody would have an intent to put in, but my assumption, because I don't know exactly what it is, is that it will be a building and then whoever will come in and lease it or rent it will be the determining factor, per se. Um, okay, so I guess one last question then, uh, other than I'll make a statement that we've heard the people uh, I'll use the word testify consistently, they are here um, because they love their neighborhood and because they live in our town. Um, how long will the people that have asked for the rezone, how long do they now have to wait to come in and ask for a different type of rezoning? Let's say it's not for light industrial. Let's say they said they want to split that property and put, you know, housing on the north side and maybe uh, a warehouse or something on the south side. How long do they have to wait to come back into rezone?
So uh, state law only allows the city council to amend the comprehensive plan once per year. And uh, so conceivably, uh, if the council so chose to run another amendment process in twenty-twenty-six, they could apply for that in twenty-twenty-six. Uh, however, um, typically, it's every other year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because anyway, um, there's other priorities, particularly, I would argue, for twenty-twenty-six, we're working on some other things besides another complan amendment. Uh, but we require it to, it, that window is required in the code to open every two years, so at least every other year. So if council chose, it could be twenty-twenty-six, but definitely in twenty-twenty-seven, uh, there'd be an open opportunity for them to apply for a reason.
Okay, one final comment. So um, do we know the, the people that purchased this? Uh, I I would have to assume that they have appropriate intent, but they purchased this knowing it's zoned residential?
Uh, that's my understanding. It's zoned residential now. Uh, we met a staff early on at the applicants before they applied. I explained to them the process and they seem to be doing their due diligence, so I assume they knew what it was zoned.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Anybody else on this one? Matt?
Um, Ryan, on the numbers you gave earlier about the, what they could do with the property currently, I was looking, I was refreshing my memory on an email that city administrator Wilson sent a couple of weeks ago that the numbers are slightly different in terms of uh, staff had suggested there were nine lots that could be created, then divided uh, into duplexes for eighteen housing units. Is that number then changed then?
Uh, that was um, that was taking out stormwater ponds and roads.
Okay, so the numbers you gave us tonight are the.
They're kind, they're kind of worst case.
Okay. But somewhere in the eighteen to, was it?
Forty.
Forty, okay, ballpark. Okay. Um, and then just following up on deputy mayor's uh, comments just there at the end about uh, buying this property, knowing it was residential. Um, I'm not uh, well-versed in local zoning matters, but I I do assume that these types of things do happen where somebody buys a property in, under one zone. They have plans for it, and that's where the staff and the council and and the community get involved to say, we don't agree with this, we don't like this, this changes the character, whatever that might be. So we probably, some of these things come up and we, some of them we say yes to, some of them we say doesn't, doesn't fit what we like and and we kind of bat them away. So kind of just like a normal thing. So we might again, in a year or two, we might have to deal with this again, but in a different context.
Yeah, it could do very well. I don't know, but uh, when the application opportunities open, then people can apply.
Thank you.
Anything, Greg?
I just, I have a quick question on that. Currently, the way it's zoned today, um, can they put sixty-four townhomes there today? They have to rezone it.
They have to.
And it's my understanding that in January, they could do that, no?
Uh, it's up to the, it's up to the city council to decide whether or not they want to open up or an annual amendment cycle. Uh, the code requires that the council make that decision before April first of each year. Um, if we're actually pursuing something like that, we are usually asking in January, since we have plenty of time to get through the process. So the council has the option every year.
But the way it stands right now, they can't put sixty-four townhomes in there currently. They'd have to reason to something else. All right, thank you.
Barbara, you have anything?
No.
No? Anybody? Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, just real quick, I want to follow up on the um, the proposal. So say that, I think you said thirty, maybe forty uh, housing units would be the maximum density, assuming uh, best case for developer, maybe worst case in some ways. It depends on whose perspective you're looking at. Um, what does that look like as far as, from a, just a planning perspective, your professional opinion, as far as like you obviously still have industrial around it, you're putting in a lot of housing. Is that something that is something that you would, what are some of the pros and cons that you see with putting forty dwelling units in that parcel?
Yeah, I think uh, is the outside of building more residential there? Well, talk about the positives first. Uh, you know, we've heard a lot of testimony about the impacts of industrial. And I think if it was residential, it would be from noise standpoint, for example, truck traffic standpoint, for example, you're going to have less impact, obviously. Uh, but, but I don't think it's wise to try to put for for sure sixty-four units in there or upzone the area to medium density residential uh, or higher, because you're bringing that many more people, I believe, to an impacted area. We've already heard testimony on noise and trucks and and vibration and concerns. It's tough to make that work um, in this zone because of, because what it's adjacent to is just the reality of it. Uh, not only that, higher density would um, you know, you're, you're putting folks um, further away from services downtown. There's no transit out there, for example, if if somebody wanted to go that route. So uh, it's not a great location for higher density residential, for sure.
And then some of the um, obviously having residential there, does it bring more traffic or less traffic if you have forty industrial, one industrial building compared to forty dwelling units? Is that?
I mean, you're it's um, it depends on what the, depends kind of what's, kind of, right, it depends on what it is. You have, you could have industrial use that has a lot of trucks and scripts, you know, out there. Uh, you know, it's a cross dock situation or deliveries. Um, and then you know, as, as I mentioned earlier, residential uh, traffic, I would, I would expect that it would go north and out twenty-ninth from the parcel A. Uh, because if you open that whole thing up as a loop, you just end up with a lot, you wouldn't end up with them turning around in your yard, I guess, but you end up with a lot more trucks just doing that loop just to get out of there. Uh, so I would expect that if you had residential on parcel A, it would all be coming out sixth.
It uh, it seems like the state is really, really wanting us on our comprehensive plan to provide affordable housing. Uh, do you think this location would be a good opportunity for that?
I think um, uh, for affordable housing, we run into some potential like social justice issues with portable being put in an area that might be less desirable. Types of impacts we're talking about. Also, without public transit, typically affordable housing and public transit go hand in hand as much as possible, because a lot of people that need affordable housing and uh, need, they, they ride transit. So that makes it kind of tough as a good location as well, I would say. Okay, thank you.
I have one last question. Well, let me move down here first. I'll come back to you. Pat, do you have anything? Neither Pat, okay, go ahead. Okay, just for clarification, uh, Ryan, can the applicant request a zoning density change within the same zone residential without require, requiring a change to the comprehensive plan?
Um, whatever changes we would contemplate, and that would be through a zoning code text amendment, so you're not changing the map, now you're looking at the text, what's allowed, I mean, what types of housing is allowed, what types of densities. Um, whatever changes one would make there would have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan, there's a range of of densities for LDR eight-point-five. And so whatever would be proposed for a zoning code detailed text amendment would have to be consistent with what's in the comprehensive plan for densities.
So they could stay in the density, but they could, and in the zoning, but could change the actual number of units or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Greg, you have something? You said?
But if, sorry, if if I could add on to that for just a second. So any zoning code text amendment, though, to increase, you know, opportunity for densities in that area. Now, it does have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, but uh, it would be a council decision, right? It would be in front of councils and public hearings and the whole
Okay.
the whole process, just to clarify that. It doesn't just happen, it would require.
Goes through the process. But you don't have to open the comp plan. Okay, thanks. Anybody else have questions on this one?
Ready to move on to the next one?
Yeah, go on to the next one. Ordinance number twenty-nine forty-two, I think, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna turn this one over to Brayden.
All right, I'll happily take it. Hello, council mayor, this is my staff's presentation for twenty-twenty-five comprehensive plan map amendment. Southeast UGA zoning redesignation, which is our Southeast Urban Growth Area, or ordinance number. So this one was another applicant initiated proposal for by the majority of our people in this area, because Southeast Urban Growth Area had a annexation application to the city. This area, as we've spoken about greatly, is just to the south of Winko or State Route four-ten and sixty-four Street. The proposal is to change the map designation of the fourteen parcels located in this area to match the current county zoning and align with the city's map. This would involve redesignating ten of the parcels to medium density residential and four of the parcels of the northernmost district commercial. Staff's presentation on it, and I'll hit it.
Anybody have any questions on that? Go ahead, Andy. You know, you know, are you good with that one?
Yep.
Matt. Matt, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, could, um, Brayden or Ryan, could you refresh our memories on this? Because I feel like I remember this one in terms of the developers already kind of signaled their intent in terms of what they want to do here. And there is a path that they could, uh, if we don't move forward with this one, they could still move forward with their plans. Um, and the city doesn't benefit from any of the additional revenue impact fees, improvements, those types of things. Um, and we wouldn't have much recourse to stop that development, other than whatever decision we decide here, just it's not within the city then at that point. Is that, is there anything I'm missing um, from that connection?
In, you know, we talked about it, but there the conditions, we would still be, to my understanding, as correct me, jump in, uh, the conditions we've applied on Serra Sipa, they would still be subject to those of there being accessed through like our sewer system. It would be us who is being impacted, so we would be a very a lot of comment would probably hold a lot of weight from Sumner on the development and our impacts to the actual city. So there is still on that front. We would have comments, we would be able to adjust our sewer, have them still be responsible for that, as we would be the provider, but other than that develop, like, cost and such would go through Pierce County, because it would be their jurisdiction, and they would still be able to develop similar skill to what they're proposing here.
Yeah, they, they, as Brayden said, they'd be required to hook up the city sewers, they're paying connection fees of water, they're in our water service areas. uh, water, you know, water service areas, and sea water, uh, as far as level of road improvements and, uh, building permit fees and all that, that would go through the county, and you'd still be able to develop. Only family, under the term zoning county. Uh, so this is basically just, lets them do the same thing in the city, and then they, as Brayden mentioned in the past, they're, uh, anticipating proposing an annexation next year.
Okay, so i- if, uh, if we just assume this development, uh, their plans for it goes forward, it's kind of either the county, uh, benefits from that and, um, has, you know, impact fees and all those types of things as a result, or the city brings them into our jurisdiction and we benefit from, from those things. Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Barbara, go ahead.
What's the process to, uh, get that urban growth area included in the city or annexed?
You want to talk about the annexation problem? Okay, I was like, I, so, so the, the area is currently an urban growth area.
Right.
Uh, which is, uh, basically an annexation, an area that we can annex into the city. Uh, the process, there's, there's eleven different ways to annex into a, into a jurisdiction, but, uh, there's only two that I'm going to talk about. One is the initiated process that the developer or the property owners out there's, uh, could start. And basically, they need to, uh, own and control at least sixty percent of the assessed value of the area, and then they can actually, uh, apply to the city for consideration for annexation. And then there's a series of timelines, there's a public hearing, there's notice, but openly that kind of gets the ball rolling. And then, uh, the other process that we talked to council about earlier in the year was, uh, an interlocal agreement process where we would look at, uh, we would have an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the city. And we looked at not just this area of the urban growth area, but upwards the Sumner Cemetery and up on the, uh, Northeast Hill, uh, as well. So, so once, you know, again, uh, property owner initiated, and then one could be city initiated, but the council still chose to do that. And there's like, uh, another nine other ways to do it.
But do you have to trade properties, you know, like?
Not, not when it's already in your urban growth area.
Okay.
Uh, there's no trading necessary, so it would just be going through the process of completing the annexation.
Okay, and then, since it's proposed by the owners, then they would pay those fees to do it?
Yeah, we actually don't have a patient fee for an annexation.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anybody else? Letting go there, alright. Ordinance number twenty-nine forty-four.
Alright, this is the update for our capital facilities plan. And the essence of this one is that the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District was in the process of working through their bond issue and not have an updated capital facilities plan. We adopted things in twenty-twenty-four, last year, when we did the periodic update. And so we now have an updated, uh, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-thirty capital facilities plan from the school district. And that then becomes part of our capital facilities plan. And the importance of that is, it is a basis for, NBA basis for, uh, impact fees, uh, school impact fees. So it's be in our capital facilities plan, so that's, I think that's, it's a one slideshow on this one, so that's basically, uh, what we're doing. It's kind of a cleanup, uh, updating that.
Any questions or comments on that, guys? Nothing? Okay.
And then the last, uh, three items, the three ordinances pertain to a, an update to the town center plan. And the three ordinances really address all three different areas. Uh, one is adopting the town center plan, which is, uh, Exhibit A in the ordinance, uh, twenty-nine thirty-nine. And then, uh, twenty-nine forty adopts amendments to the codes. You have the, the plan, and then you adopt amendments to the code. We have a, a form-based code, which is a separate code under a separate cover. Uh, there's a lot of details in it that are not in our municipal code per se, but the municipal code references it. It's all part of the same. It's all, it's all regulation. Uh, and then there are details in the, the zoning code, the definitions, um, addressing accessory dwelling units, creating the standards for the idea zone overlay. Uh, all those things are, are in the details of the zoning code amendments. And then, whoops. Um, what's not on here is the planned action ordinance, twenty-nine forty-one, slide on that one. But anyhow, uh, the town center plan area has an adopted planned action ordinance, which is a tool used through SEPA to review, um, mitigation potential that the plan developed could create. And so it, uh, it allows for individual development properties, uh, individual areas to be developed, individual permits and processes to not have to go through a detailed, uh, additional detailed SEPA pro- process. Because the planner takes that into consideration. And so ordinance number twenty-nine forty-one would update the planned action ordinance, uh, that's already there, based on new projections for, uh, traffic numbers as well as dwelling unit numbers. There's three things that, uh, towns, three, three different, uh, ordinances of the town center plan update, uh, entails.
Any, any questions? Andy?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Ryan. I think I just wanted to get a little bit more feedback on Mr. Jones's comments. I think he was concerned about parking, and I think one of the things I really do appreciate about, um, I followed up with him to try to get a better understanding, is that uh, some of the form-based code and the parking requirements really make it hard for small developers. So we're, we're kind of setting it up in his perspective to make it so somebody could compiles ten or twelve lots, it works really well for them, but somebody who's just a normal, maybe doesn't have that much time or money to do that, it doesn't have the same opportunities. Can you elaborate on his concerns, and if there's anything that, uh, is addressed in this that would accommodate small developers?
Yes, absolutely, Councilmember Elpers. Um, I did give, um, Mr. Justin Jones a call after his comments to try to understand where, where he was coming from. And we actually went back into the code. Uh, Krishonda and I were working on it and found where we actually needed to make some changes that were, um, uh, they were, they were wrong. We had, uh, we had said something, we had made some changes inside the form-based code around parking that, um, had actually, um, made it a lot harder for commercial parking farms. Uh, and that was an error, because we had translated, right in front of me, but there were portions of the code where it was a footnote, and Krishonda was moving things over to a, kind of, it's going to apply to all zones, and then transposing it from one to the other. Uh, it changed what the code had been underlying. And so we've changed that, we, she brought that forward at the study session, and we've changed it now back, so that it's, it's, and I talked to Mr. Jones about it, and so it's much, it reads the way it was intended to read originally, uh, in a different part of the code, but it's the same, same outcome.
Okay, so you think hi- his concerns were addressed to just, it's just a more typographical?
Yes, it was, it was, yes.
Okay, correct, thank you.
Alright, is that it? On yeah?
That's everything? If there's no more questions?
I just need a clarifying point, then. So based on what Councilmember Elpers just stated, so is there an issue for small infill development? And could it cause missed opportunities or not?
No, I think that the form-based code, uh, makes opportunity for infill development.
Okay. Alright.
It's not just a wholesale redevelopment.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Now, there's more. I will adjourn the special study session.
There are one more items on it.
What?
Yeah.
One more item.
What do we have?
Where is it?
Right there.
Bye.
Oh. I already crossed it off, sorry.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, ordinance number two-nine four-five, mid biennial budget amendment.
This is.
All that time she waited and I almost pushed her out. Sorry, Chris. Don't cry, it's okay. We'll be fine.
This is the most.
She was here, but. She's not coming.
Okay, okay, hit it. So we are here tonight, uh, to review the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand six, twenty-six mid biennial budget amendment.
Uh, our twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget was adopted December ninth of two thousand twenty-four. And why are we doing this amendment? Uh, the first answer is specifically for the mid buy is because statute requires us to. Uh, all municipalities budgeting biennially are required to review and make amendments for a mid, at the, um, end of the year. But beyond the requirement, budget amendments are our best way of ensuring that I, when we adopt a biennial budget, that we are providing council a timely and transparent view of budget needs. Uh, this gives staff and council the opportunity to review changes, revisit and revise forecasts, adjust for programmatic changes, identify and adjust for efficiencies, and make those, um, adjustments in a timely basis, as opposed to coming back to council at the end of a biennium and saying, oh, by the way. Um, I'd like to thank very much our finance and personnel committee. We got to sit last Thursday and review the mid buy light item by line item. Um, it's summarized here at the study session. I'm happy to answer any questions, but our, uh, finance committee went through about a hundred and seventy-one individual line items uh, in preparation for this meeting. Uh, essentially, the amendment process is an integral part of our overall financial management process. It's our way of ensuring that council is kept updated on what is happening with the city's budget. The budget is not only a planning document, it's a communications document, it is a working document. And so here we are this evening. We've got a lot of changes in this mid buy. Um, the first thing I'm going to talk about is labor changes. Uh, our staff is our largest resource, it's our most valuable resource, and we are constantly looking for ways to do our jobs better, more efficiently, and using the city's resources, uh, to the maximum leverage that we can. To that end, we've got some changes upcoming in how we structure our labor in two thousand and twenty-six. We are creating a public operations department. This is realigning our public works department into public operations, as well as engineering. Uh, to that end, we are bringing in a interim public operations director, that's an internal, uh, promotional opportunity. It's interim because our directors are, um, have employment agreements, and that employment agreement will come before council for, for approval. That's anticipated to begin January first. Additionally, we'll have a public operations department deputy director. We also reallocated our fixed labor costs, uh, between the general fund, cemetery fund, water, sewer, and stormwater. And really what that means is we took a look at what individual positions are tasked to do, what their function is, and ensured that the correct bucket of funds was paying for, for that. All of our staff is somehow allocated, their fixed labor is either allocated directly to our payroll process to individual funds, or in the case of the administrative departments, it's allocated out to the user funds by the use of an indirect cost assessment model. In addition, when we looked at our utility rate model, as Mr. Kosa alluded to earlier, we also looked at fixed labor cost as part of that labor allocation model, and reallocated costs based on function between our general fund, which essentially is street operations, uh, water, sewer, and stormwater. Additionally, the rate model includes an additional four FTE in our public operations department, um, to really realign with the staffing needs that we've had over the past several years, um, knowing that we didn't have a place to put anybody. Now with the operations facility coming online, we do need to, and catch up on that staffing. Understanding that the operations facility doesn't, won't be, um, open for inhabiting until later in two thousand and twenty-six, our labor matrix actually programs those additional FTE to be effective July first of two thousand twenty-six. That also frankly gives our human resources department a little bit more time, um, to do that recruiting. That's, that's a big process. Other labor changes that we have, a non-represented salary survey, I believe everyone has been briefed on that already. Um, but really that was taking a look, um, at our management flow, or, sorry, our compensation philosophy and doing a spot study of our non-represented positions to be sure that we are still within the, um, compensation philosophy that's been set out by city council. Other changes that we've incorporated into this mid biennial budget amendment are changes in our planning and community, or essentially our economic development, economic and community development department. Uh, with the upcoming anticipated retirement of one of our director staff, but, you know, bringing in a planning manager, um, that would be effective in April. And really what that does is it gives us the first quarter of the year to really develop what that position looks like, bring that position on mid-year, and then have that an overlapping company, that overlapping backfilling time. So we've got some, um, some transition period. Understanding that then in two thousand and twenty-seven, that director position would actually drop off of the labor matrix, but it would be in place over two thousand and twenty-six. Senior Center, with the change in senior center operations, moving out from a third-party contract back under city operations, that also necessitated bringing in the two-point-two-five FTE that are programmed in the senior center, um, back into the city's labor matrix. So prior, they were employees of Stafford Suites, um, and we've had a professional services agreement. They're now employees of the city, so we need to bring those back into our, into our funding. And then finally, a municipal court judge, beginning in two thousand and twenty-six, that will be a city of Bonnie Lake position. Uh, we will see an offset, of course, we're, we're dropping our labor cost down with the elimination of that position in the city's organization chart, but we're going to have an offset increase, um, to our professional services that are paid to Bonnie Lake. Overall, what that does to each fund, I've laid out here, you can see that there are adjustments in each one of the funds, um, stormwater fund. We see the biggest impact of that reallocation between water, sewer, storm, and the general fund. Uh, we also have changes in fleet operations, in cemetery, in IT. A lot of these changes are coming because of the, those, um, reallocations of our fixed labor. So I'm happy to answer any questions on labor. Um, if we get down too granular, I'll need to defer back to Mr. Stevens.
Any questions?
I do, I'm just trying to figure out, uh, Cassandra, how do we, um, how do we distinguish in this adjustment, this is a little more complex than normal, from what you've explained, uh, which items are related to things that are over budget and which items are just reorganization? Because it seems like there's, there's, both of them are happening at the same time, is that correct?
What do you mean by over budget?
Um, well, sometimes we come up with a, a mid-buy budget, and it's like, hey, this, you know, with the, the court system, we had some issues with, with Bonnie Lake, it restructured it, we have additional costs that are shifted, and so the costs are shifting, and so there's different, different costs, and it was anticipated, and we're doing an adjustment because of that. And, and this one, it seems like it's a combination of, of those issues, which are normal, and those are fairly simple, with the reorganization, which is, uh, not as normal for what we've done in the past. So I'm just curious, is there a way for us to, to bifurcate that at all?
There's, there's about a dozen and a half different changes that went into this, this labor matrix, um. Yes and no. So some of them are relatively easy, you know, senior center. I, I can pretty well quantify what the labor is going to be for the senior center, and then what the offset is. You know, the labor is about two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars for senior center, um, the offset is about three-hundred-thousand dollars. So it's, it's roughly a wash. It gets more difficult when we start getting into the public operations department reorg, because we also took positions that previously may have only been allocated either to the general fund, for instance, parks or facilities operations. And now we're moving those into the public operations department, and we're changing all those allocations. So now positions that may never have been allocated to the public operations director, you know, now has a piece of facilities and tem- and cemetery and things like that. So some of them are a little bit easier than others. I'd be happy to sit down and go over, you know, kind of what the labor matrix looks like, having to get down into that granular, but it, I wish there was a better way of doing like four different matrices and saying, okay, this change is going to result in this, and this change is going to result in this. But in a way, except for, instead of, they're kind of building on each other.
Okay, I, and I'm just appreciative, I'm just trying to understand. Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing, the public, the POD, what's it called? P, Public Operations Department?
I'm going to have to stop myself from saying pod people, but yes.
Okay. That one, so that's an. That one, so that's going to include both general fund employees as well as utility enterprise fund employees, and they're going to be combined in one department and that is creating some of the intricacies of this.
Are you good? For now. And then I get into the overall amendment. So what I've done is really try to get down into a more granular level without just getting into even more columns of numbers. So I've split it out between the the fund category, revenues, transfers, interfund revenues and then expenditures. So if we look at that transfer in and that transfer out column, you'll see that the total on those is the same. You know, we always want to be sure our transfers in are equally our transfers out. And it's the same for the interfund revenues and the interfund expenditures, that's really movements between the funds. I had a great question proposed at finance committee is, you know, why do we have, we may have one item, you know, the purchase of a forklift and we're going to have twelve different light items, and it really is because municipalities budget using a fund accounting. Each fund, think of it as its own bucket of revenues, expenditures and fund balance. So if I'm making use between those funds, we're pulling out of one bucket, putting into the other bucket and then programming the expenditure, and so it does result in multiple lines. Sometimes if you lump that all together, just in revenues and expenditures, it can be a little misleading. Because you know, sometimes it's not a true revenue, you're just moving interfund revenues and expenses between those funds, and so I broke it out this way. What I'd like to do is just take a look fund by fund, go over what the biggest changes are and then happy to answer any questions on those. In the general fund, this is by far where we have the most changes. On the revenue side, recognizing three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. This is truing up both our twenty five and our twenty six add war and property tax. When we first adopted the twenty five, twenty six budget, we were going off the estimate for twenty five. Had a one percent increase, did a one percent increase in two thousand twenty six. The reason I recognize this change is when I'm then coming back to council in March or April with our five-year financial model, this ensures that I'm tracking those numbers as accurately as I can. A community court grant, we have a grant from the Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts for a therapeutic court, that's come before council previously. The court has a, I'm sorry, the state has a different fiscal year than the city. So this is recognizing the second half of two thousand and twenty five. Revenues about fifty one thousand dollars and in an offsetting expenditure of the same amount. Similarly, we had a five hundred thousand dollar grant from Department of Commerce for climate planning, this is our climate resiliency grant. Some changes in how the legislature was approving that grant going forth into future years essentially means that we won't be recognizing a portion of that, and so we're going to drop that revenue down by three hundred and twenty thousand dollars with an associated drop down in the on the expenditure line. The forklift, you'll see this in four different funds. Forklift is fifty thousand dollars, our forklift had to be replaced and we were lucky enough to find one locally, we were able to obtain. That is split between the general fund, water sewer and storm, and so we're going to see that line item in four different funds. Back on the revenue side, both plan checking services and fines and forfeits came in significantly over where they were forecast. Plan checking services is of course part of our development services. So that relates to development activity, it's nice to see that that happening, bringing those revenues in to help offset those costs. And then fines and forfeits really is dependent on what the court is doing. As we get into the different departments, legislative, we're asking for an additional nine thousand dollars, this is to cover several items. Anticipated training in two thousand and twenty six, some anticipated logo wear as we have many new council members coming in. And then an additional six thousand dollars for Jurassic Park, which is a parliamentary training. That'll be important as we have new council makeup coming in. Additionally, we're asking for twenty one thousand dollars, this is to add through P C T V to be broadcasting our study sessions as well as our regular council meetings. This gives us a lot of just transparency benefits. Like right now for a study session, if the public is watching on YouTube, they're just thinking in the back of my head, you know, we're not having dynamic camera angles and this would give us that ability as well as just giving us consistency with how our study sessions are broadcast compared to our regular council meetings. In the municipal court, we see a hundred and seventy seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. This is the renegotiation of the interlocal agreement with the city of Bonnie Lake. This is one of the offsets I was mentioning earlier, this is an offset with eliminating the judge position out of our organization chart, but we do see increased costs over in our professional services. In our executive department, we have an additional twenty five hundred dollars that is for an I C M A membership, communications. An additional twenty five hundred dollars that is for the administration costs of our seed internship program, which has been a beautiful, beautiful success story over the past several years. For legal services, in Ryan House, we see a transfer in of thirty five thousand dollars and then an expenditure of thirty five thousand dollars. That we'll see in Parks Capital, that is a transfer out from the funding that was initially programmed in for park amenities at the Lucy B Ryan Park. And reprogramming that thirty five thousand dollars to our legal department, and that really is to account for the additional litigation services that were incurred after July thirty first, our most recent payment for those services was for services through July for thirty first, so we still need to be able to compensate for those August services or for any services after July thirty first. Additionally, in legal services, we have twelve thousand dollars. Twelve thousand dollars additionally for, let me get this backwards. Public defender, or I'm sorry, twelve thousand dollars for prosecution and then six thousand dollars for additional public defender. And those are just consistent with with typical contract increased costs for those services. Facilities, we've got a lift in facilities of about forty two thousand dollars. This is a combination of several different items, actually, I'm a substance on these. In facilities, we have about fifteen thousand dollars in small tools and that's a large amount for one year. But that was, we brought on an additional facilities technician, so that was ensuring that we have the tools to outfit that position as well as some furniture and some remodel things in city hall. Additionally, we had some rents and leases, saw rentals, dehumidifier for some flooding down in our lease department. Repairs and maintenance, about six thousand dollars, that was for gate access here at city hall, that's our big gate outside, the one that slides. As well as repairs at our front door and then some arc flash training. Additionally, in the custodial portion of our facilities department, we had a variety of additional costs when we brought the senior center back in, and so that's going to include not only overtime, office and operating supplies for custodial supplies and the purchase of a floor scrubber. There's a hard surface over at the senior center. It gets a lot of wear, and so we needed to be sure that we were able to maintain that. In community development, additional four, let's see where am I, four thousand dollars. That really is for anticipated training, we've had some staffing changes in C D over the past year. We had one of our staff retire. A new staff comes in, takes, you know, is really interested in taking advantage of those professional development opportunities and we want to be able to program that. In community services, music off main, we had some additional costs in two thousand and twenty five specific to stage rental and generator rental. So we are making that adjustment for two thousand twenty five. We're also carrying over that adjustment into two thousand and twenty six, so it's adequately funded. And then a little more in two thousand and twenty six, because the way that the weekends layout, we're able to add an additional concert. We want to be sure that we've got the ability to do that. In parks, small tools and equipment, saws, ladders, pressure washers. We've been looking for quite some time, really the best way to improve our efficiencies in how we are procuring and replacing and planning for small tools. We already do a lot of planning for our replacement of heavy equipment in vehicles, the small tools are one of those things where we use them, we use them hard, you know, we want to be sure that we've got a program in that. So in the twenty five, twenty six budget, parks actually did not program any expense, any budget for small tools and equipment because we wanted to get this program into place. We're continuing to kind of work and refine that program, but we need to provide that budget for twenty five and for twenty five and for twenty six in order to provide those small tools. Additionally, in parks, we had sixty five hundred dollars in additional porta potties. A big portion of that was we had to pay for a G image or it was a destroyed porta potty, and so that falls into that as well. And then registration, some additional courses and exams in our parks department. Transfers out, we see our general fund also transferring out, it'll be a transfer out to our facilities capital of two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. That is to remodel bathroom facilities here at city hall that specifically in our restroom areas here downstairs. The expense is because there's a fair amount of infrastructure work, so there are sewer pipelines that are going to have to be repaired. And so there's a fair amount of work to be done for that. In addition, we transferring out to facilities capital fifteen thousand dollars. And this is to do a minor remodel at our senior center to provide for a gender neutral restroom, so an enclosed, a single stall gender neutral restroom. Also at the senior center, an intrusion panel, so as we continue to kind of deploy our overall holistic access control with an intrusion program through the city, we have an intrusion panel need out at the senior center. And so the senior center would have a cost for that. Almost don't have the general fund. In metro, if you recall back, our metro animal services building had a mold issue that had to be remediated, that happened in kind of late last year, early two thousand and twenty five. Under the interlocal agreement, of course, so with metro, Sumner and Puyallup are the partner cities, and then we have several contract cities. The interlocal agreement with the city of Puyallup for metro animal services for these two partner cities assigns the city of Sumner a proportionate share of the cost of these kind of major repairs. Thirty five thousand dollars is our portion of the cost, the actual cost was significantly higher, Puyallup has kind of a large in share of it. Metro Animal Services runs at a raise within margin, it just, you know, it is not a profit maker, it was never intended to be, it's intended to cover its costs. And so this is a general fund expense, this will be a transfer out to our metro services fund to cover those costs. Additionally, I know council has been briefed on the planned demolition at the skate park. Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars will be transferred out of the general fund into our parks capital to support that. Fleet operations, fleet operations has an additional assessment, a lot of that goes back to the labor matrix. As we program additional costs towards fleets, we need to be sure that we're supporting that. Our fleet operations fund is an internal service fund. So it is designed for user costs to cover its user charges. So we need to increase that support from the general fund. Very similarly to the cemetery, now that we have labor costs that historically have not been charged to the cemetery, being charged to the cemetery will increase the subsidy from the general fund into the cemetery to help cover those. Finally, the infotech assessment. The city has been looking for the best program to replace a, an asset management software that is nearing end of life and functionally no longer fits the city's needs. Been working on this for quite some time. The team that's been working on those evaluations has landed on Open Gov asset management software, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over a three-year implementation period. And so the portion of that, that's attributable to the general fund is about thirty two thousand five hundred, so we'll be increasing the insured, the infotech assessment for that. Again, it's a three-year implementation, we'll continue to use our current asset essentials kind of in the interim, but once Open Gov is fully implemented, we'll see the cost for asset essentials drop off. And then, of course, we have the labor changes. Happy to answer any questions on general fund stuff, I promise the other funds aren't as long. Any questions? Any questions? Andy, I know you have one.
I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but so I'm looking at total revenues, two twenty six, total expenditures, one point two. Does that mean we spent a million dollars more than we anticipated in this this half of the biennium?
Between labor in the various, for instance, the metro services and the skate park demolition, the bathroom remodels, yes, so that's, that would be coming out of fund balance.
Out of fund, okay, and then what's our total budget for general fund? Do you recall just in rough numbers, is it, I mean, that's a pretty big percentage, wouldn't we?
I will circle back to you on that one. A lot of numbers in my head right now, I want to be sure I'm giving you the right one. Any other questions? So moving on to the special revenue funds, in fund one oh five, this is our drug seizure fund, it doesn't have a whole lot of activity. We rarely see any revenues back into this fund, primarily we have a fund balance that is still available for expenditures. Drug seizure is a restricted revenue fund. We did purchase a ballistic helmet out of those, out of that fund balance, and we do need to program that. It's a small amount, but under statute, we need to be sure that we're not spending any more than we have an appropriated authority for, so we need to recognize that at that purchase. In fund one oh six, this is our tourism revenues, the L TAC committee has recently recommended a support from tourism funds of two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. This is a transfer out, you'll see this later on in our parks capital as a transfer in. Fund one one five, our ARPA funds, we're coming to the tail end of these, so ARPA funds have to be all spent by the end of two thousand and twenty six. We had initially intended to split the wayfinding signage fifty fifty between ARPA and L TAC. It turns out that after we deobligated some funds, specifically the bus app program in the ARPA fund, that we're able to pick up the full hundred percent of that wayfinding signage in the ARPA fund, and so we're asking for that. Fund one twenty, this is our brand new fund, transportation benefit district, recognizing anticipated revenues of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're also programming in placeholders for roadway preservation and sidewalk preservation. You'll notice it's not the full amount. There is a reason for that, the funding for that, the point one percent sales tax becomes effective January first, so there's going to be a period of time before we begin to build those reserves. Sales tax has a two-month lag from the time the transaction takes place in the marketplace until we see a receipt. So there's always going to be a two-month lag, we won't begin to see receipts into this fund until the March thirty first sales tax remittance. Additionally, I know public works is intending to come to council in the first quarter two thousand twenty six to kind of talk about the transportation benefit district overall as far as programming, intent, things like that. So this is, we're recognizing the intended revenue as well as putting those placeholders in. Fund three oh five, this is real estate excise tax, there is a excise tax that's imposed on every real estate transaction that happens within city limits. We typically are very conservative in how we forecast this because it is completely dependent on real estate activity, we have no control over this. What happens, happens. For two thousand and twenty five, we actually had some really nice transactions, we had some good sale transactions specifically up in our M I C, our manufacturing and industrial center. And so I'd like to true these up to natural, so we are bringing in an additional five hundred and sixty thousand dollars of real estate excise tax. That remains in fund balance in the REIT fund until city council is presented with a budget ask to appropriate it for a specific fund or for, I'm sorry, for a specific project. So REIT revenues are restricted to certain projects and we don't appropriate them for project support until it goes through a city council budget process, whether that's a budget adoption or a budget amendment. So you'll see here, all we're recognizing are the revenues. In fund three ten, this is our parks capital, we've actually already talked about all three of these. For Hop Sally Heritage Park, we're recognizing a transfer in from L TAC and then also programming the associated expenditure. And then also programming the associated expenditure. For Lucy B Ryan Park, reducing the expenditure. Budget, which was for park amenities and reprogramming that as a transfer out, which we then saw as a transfer into the general fund. And then for the skate park demolition, recognizing the transfer in also from the general fund and programming the expenditure. And Fund three twenty, this is Streets Capital. We're actually recognizing a transfer in of about fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in the associated expenditure. We're going to see this as a transfer out in our water fund. If you recall, council approved a settlement with the contractor for a town center utility woodwork project. That was also done in a similar way as a transfer from the water fund. That settlement was subject to sales tax. So we want to get that recognized. Additionally, we're transferring in eighty eight thousand dollars from impact fees. This will be coming in from our Fund six oh five, our transportation impact fees. And then programming the expenditure. This is for additional design activities for our Tacoma and Puyallup section improvement and and. And that we've talked about that with council as well in prior meetings. In Fund three two five, that's our facilities capital, seeing that transfer in and the expenditure for the two restroom remodels. As we move into our utility funds, here we see our transfer out for the T C W settlement costs. Portion of the forklift that's attributable to the water fund. You see twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is for cross connection software. So this is specifically software that is used to help manage. Cross connection, backflow testing. Our, the program we use is end of life, so we'll be improving that. Additionally, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that needs to be programmed in for central well filter medium. This was described to me as a great big Brillo pad. For the filter media for our central well. Radio user and maintenance fees. We're going to see this in both in funds for water sewer and storm. In our twenty five, twenty six budget, city council appropriated and approved a eight hundred megahertz feasibility study for communications. That comes with a ten thousand dollar annual. Radio user and maintenance fee from the city of Puyallup. And so that's being split between water sewer and storm. And then finally, in water, we see the infotech assessment. This is the water's portion of the open web software as well as the labor changes. When we get into the capital for the water fund. I'm actually going to move first to that second line, town, cemetery and maple utilities. Mr. Kosa alluded earlier as in the rate model and in response to questions from council about, you know, kind of what was deferred. This is one of those projects that was deferred and we're going to see this line in water sewer and storm. And then we have some other offsets, our radio read system by deferring. The cherry and maple utilities are actually able to program in included in the rate model. Adding functionality to our existing water meters for radio reads. That gives us more transparency with our customers. It gives us more efficiencies in our meter reading. And really does provide a lot of value added. The last four lines, moving from the water main replacements, viewpoint tank and one fifty ninth, these were individual projects that were programmed in to the budget. These really are all part of an overall water system improvement project. And so we're really just kind of truing that up. Those last four line items are a net zero. We're just reallocating those projects to the water system improvements. Really, which just gives it, gives more ease in tracking and more ease and accounting for those. In our sewer fund, so this is our wastewater. We see our forklift, our radio user maintenance fees. In our prior rate models, the rate model we did two years ago, we had initially programmed in for a wastewater treatment facility building study. We ended up taking that out of the twenty five, twenty six budget because we had some staffing changes. Now that we are able to kind of take that step back, we'll have our operations with the operations facility. We're doing our other labor changes that are necessary to really to be sure that we've got those efficiencies. We'd like to. Take a look back and and re-add in that that building study. That was included in the rate model. Here in here, and then we also see the deferral of the cherry and maple utilities as well as the infotech assessment and labor changes. In stormwater, forklift, radio user maintenance fees. The deferred material and maple utilities, the infotech assessment and labor changes. This really kind of goes back to that whole bucket. Allegory, you know, one. Kind of programmatic change might have multiple line items and multiple funds because each one of those funds is a self balancing set of accounts. In cemetery operations. Derek Berry did a lot of work in kind of like taking a look at where we work for charges for services. We know that our items purchased for resale. Are. Over budget. We need to appropriate additional budget for those items purchased for resale, but we wanted to be sure that that's things like. Buying the things that we turn around and include in our charges for service. So that's buying of liners, vases. It's a whole list of things. We wanted to be sure that those were reflected also in what we were seeing and the revenues coming in for cemetery services that we were offering. So it's it's just a really good. Transparency check and efficiency, efficiency check. If our. Costs for items for resale are going up, we should see that in our charges for service as well. And we do. And so that's where we're seeing here an increase in charges for service. That's everything from sell of lots to sale of markers, sell of bases. Of ones and closings. We additionally had an increase of about eleven thousand, three hundred dollars in seasonal labor. We had a capital project programmed for twenty five. To automate the irrigation out at the cemetery. That went from what sounds like a really straightforward project to a much bigger project requiring water connections, all kinds of things. And it delayed the project. So it wasn't able to be really in place to have automated irrigation for two thousand twenty five. We needed to bring in a seasonal help to help. Do that manual irrigation. Labor changes, items purchased for resale, we discussed banking fees. Banking fees is something that we're going to be talking about in our next budget cycle. It is fabulous to be able to offer our customers the ability to pay online, in person, over the phone, in a myriad of different ways. The cost for that going up and up. So that's something we'll be talking about. But in the meantime, because the cemetery is an enterprise fund, it's. Service charges need to cover its costs. We need to program in for those banking fees. And then here we see also the facility improvement for the intrusion panel. That's additional intrusion panel out at our new cemetery building. And then we see that transfer in from the general fund, increasing that operating subsidy. We have always had an operating subsidy from the general fund into our cemetery operations. That's something that we've been talking about for years and and really kind of is a. It's a general fund cost to. Being able to keep those fees at our cemetery. At a reasonable basis. And it's always something that council could go back and take another look at. But for right now, we do have that subsidy and we need to have that additional increase from the general fund. In Fund four forty, this is our Metro Animal Services, building repairs. There's that thirty five thousand dollars. We're recognizing an additional thirty nine thousand dollars in revenue in per capita fees. So per capita fees are reviewed annually. By our police department and we have a thirty five cent per capita increase for two thousand and twenty six. For both our partner cities and our contract cities. And so we see that recognized here. Increases in small tools and minor equipment and operating rents and leases. These are directly attributable to the. Into the building repairs. So for some time there, we were renting a storage unit and a restroom that were placed in the parking lot at Metro. And then we had to replace some of the small tools and equipment that were damaged. In the building and then the labor changes. Oh, we're so close to being done. In Fund five fifty, so this is our fleet operations fund. We are seeing a transfer in from the general fund. And an associated expenditure for generator maintenance. This was something that was initially programmed in the general fund in facilities. We're going to reprogram that out to our fleet operations fund. Just a realignment of where the cost is to who is actually doing that work. And then we see the labor changes as well. Fund five five one, this is our information technology fund, senior center intrusion panel, the cemetery intrusion panel. Cross connection software and the open gov asset managers. So, and then we have the labor changes. Again, we, we talked about these all in previous funds. These are all funded by user charges as an internal service fund. Everything that gets funded there. Gets assessed out to the departments or the funds that are using those services. I think we've just got. Two more funds. Five fifty five, this is equipment replacement. This is where we use our equipment acquisition. So we see the forklift. We also see the acquisition of three additional public operations department vehicles. And this is vehicles for the interim director as well as the deputy director and an additional fleet superintendent. I'm sorry, additional, additional field superintendent. We will true this up and once the splits for those, the labor distributions for those positions are finalized. We will then go back in a subsequent budget amendment and assess out those departments for the cost of these vehicles. Developer impact fee fund. Here we see that eighty eight thousand dollar transfer out to our street capital of transportation impact fees for the Tacoma Puyallup intersection. And then in Fund six one one, this is our firefighter's pension. This is just truing up to actual in two thousand and twenty five for pension and disability payments. As well as retiring medical expenses that under state statute, we bear the responsibility for. That is our mid buy. It's a lot. It was a lot of line items. You know, it was even a lot to kind of bring it up. To, you know. Kind of summarized at this level. I actually think this was a great mid buy. Everything in here is designed to leverage the city's dollars. As. Maximum as we can increase our efficiency and how we are doing things and really provide for better operations of the city. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, my thanks to our finance and personnel committee. I was very nostalgic at that committee. It was our last committee meeting with our sitting committee. So I just, you know, want to take the opportunity to say thank you. Especially for your patience last week as we went through all hundred and seventy one lines of this.
Any questions for her? You do? No? Any questions down here? Andy, you always have a question.
I think we gotta stop spending so much money.
I'm not disagreeing, but it's all for good. Where you'll see this next is we have a public hearing scheduled for next week. And then you'll see the ordinance come to you on December first.
Very good. Nice job.
Thank you. If you have any questions or if you think of anything. You've got my phone number, you've got my email.
Alright.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so there's more. So we will. Adjourn this meeting. At nine eleven. Into executive session. To discuss the following, R C W four two point three zero point one four zero four, closed session. About collective bargaining. For a period of ten minutes and there will be no action to follow. I'll adjourn this meeting at nine eleven.